Welcome to Zoom. Enter your Enter your participant ID. You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak.
All right, here's that. Okay, welcome back everyone to Capital City Council meeting. And we're gonna go ahead and have an announcement from our clerk.
Thank you. Yes, good evening Mayor. Hello and welcome to the Capital City Council meeting. In accordance with the current health orders in Santa Cruz County and in the state of California, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom. And there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or a landline mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight, is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, on the slides now shown, and on the published meeting agenda. As always, this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 AM and on Saturday following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 7D1 and Comcast Channel 25. The meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website. And our technician tonight is Walter. Thank you.
Thank you Chloe. Thank you Walter. Okay, you can please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to item two presentations. And we are going to, it's item two A, the proclamation for March 2021 American Red Cross Month. And I believe I have the honor of announcing the mayor's proclamation designating March 2021 as American Red Cross Month. Whereas each year in March jurisdictions across the country recognize the American Red Cross for its humanitarian efforts during life emergencies, whether in Capitola, across the United States, or around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission. Whereas every day, people in our community depend on the American Red Cross and as volunteers, donors, and community partners, their life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We recognize the volunteers heroes in Capitola and all those who support their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Now nearly 200 years since the birth of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance for noble legacies. We ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need and support the organization's humanitarian mission. And now therefore I, Yvette Brooks, Mayor of Capitola, do hereby proclaim March 2021 American Red Cross Month. Well, I am going to now ask, and I don't see her on, oh, Ms. Avril, are you, are you there? She might still be connecting. This is very exciting for me, everyone. This is my first mayor's proclamation. And what an honor it is to designate March as American Red Cross Month. I believe Ms. Avril from the Red Cross wanted to say a few words, but I'm not sure if she's still on. Just give it one more second.
Hi Yvette, I'm Anita Clarice and I'm here from the Red Cross.
Oh, no, the Fox.
I know. And I'm sorry, I saw her on earlier and I don't see her now. So, oh no, I see her now. Here she comes.
I see her. I see her, but I can't see, hear her.
Right, okay, well, I'll speak for a second. I'm, I am the vice chair of the Central Coast Chapter of American Red Cross. And this is my first time being on one of these city council calls slash meetings. So I really appreciate the opportunity to join y'all. This was really fun. And, and you know, we have a list of talking points, but I just wanna say, you know, thank you very much for, you know, considering, or you know, kind of, yeah, considering March Red Cross Month in the city of Capitola. We really appreciate your support and agree with all the notes you made and points you made about, you know, the Red Cross involvement in the community. So thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, if she returned and we get to take a quick pause, we'll give her a second to say a few words as well. Thank you for stepping in and thank you for all you do for our community.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Okay, so we're now gonna move on to item three, report out on closed session.
Good evening, council members. The council held closed session on the items on the agenda and no action taken.
Great. Okay, now item four for additional materials. Do we have any additional materials for tonight's agenda?
There were no additional materials for this agenda.
Okay, and item five for additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any tonight?
Doc would recommend pulling item eight D off consent, the update on the pandemic response.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I went ahead and noted that. Okay, now we're moving on to item six for public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor Brooks, I see someone with their hand up. It's United Way of Santa Cruz County.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, they can.
Hi everyone. Good evening, Mayor Yvette Brooks and Capitol City Council members. My name is Amanda Gandon and I'm the Community Impact Coordinator for the Youth Action Network in United States at United Way of Santa Cruz County. I wanted to thank you, Mayor Brooks and City Manager Jamie Goldstein for meeting with us and showing your commitment in continuing this partnership. We'd also like to acknowledge the city council member Bertram for his active role in the former youth violence prevention task force. I'm here today to ask the Capitol City Council to support the newly reformed Youth Action Network at United Way. The Youth Action Network's goal is to create a collaborative network of youth organizations and leadership groups where you can center youth voice and leadership in decision-making and support youth development partnerships to create collective impact for community change. We see the need to respond differently, not by deputiting existing youth programs, but to partner with local jurisdictions, community agencies, and leaders to align and leverage resources for opportunities for positive youth development countywide. We see this as an opportunity for the city of Capitola to support youth voice and youth leadership at the local government level and build a bridge between local youth and policymakers. We know that involving youth in local decision-making processes can create partnerships. And creating partnerships with adults has the potential to promote positive youth development outcomes and benefit organizational development for city programs. And we would like to ask for this Capitol City Council to, you would like to ask the Capitol City Council to have a council member represent and serve on the Youth Action Network. And as you know, COVID-19 and systemic racism continues to impact our communities. And we know how funding for youth development, especially BIPOC youth, is very critical for their overall well-being. And our goal with the Youth Action Network is to amplify the voices of BIPOC youth and all youth in our communities where their visions and dreams of building a better community can be heard by community peers, educators, and community members. With your support, we would also like to ask for a request of $2,500 to $3,500 to support youth from the city of Capitola and the Youth Action Network. Your financial contributions with support coordination provides youth guidance, interest class building training in areas of leadership development, facilitation, project management, job recruiting, and more. We envision the Youth Action Network being a place to support enough with the next generation of leaders across Santa Cruz County. We plan to follow up and schedule more in-depth presentations towards the later months of spring and May. And please reach out to us if you have any questions during the time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Did Ms. Avril make it back on? I saw her come in and out, blurry, did we?
I'm sorry, I don't see her, I don't see the Red Cross on, or I'm sorry, I see Ms. Clarice, but I do not see the other person. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no problem. I just wanted to double check before we moved on to council and staff comments. Okay, well, we're gonna go ahead then and move on to item seven. This is city council and staff comments. We'll go ahead and begin with staff comments.
Staff has any comments this evening?
Okay, do we have any council comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. I just have three brief comments. The first one, following your proclamation of American Red Cross The first one, following your proclamation of American Red Cross Month, ironically, I looked over to my right and found some gems that I found recently in an antique store, which are American Red Cross First Aid Textbook and Lifesaving and Water Safety Textbook from 1937 and 1945.
Oh, God.
Yeah, they were pretty interesting. I found them in an antique store and my partner, the Red Cross volunteer, so I got them for him. But it just was coincidence that I looked over and saw them and thought, oh, I should show these because it was pretty interesting to find.
Thank you.
So I wanted to share that fun tidbit. The next thing I wanted to share, as many of you know, myself, as well as Mayor Brooks, have participated recently in some community meetings that address racial justice and equity throughout the city of Capitola and our region. And really, the audience and participants have expanded throughout the state of California. And we have been working with a community member named Joyce Flynn, who has been our facilitator and helped us put these meetings together. And I just wanted to congratulate her because we recently learned that she has been awarded one of the KSBW Jefferson Awards. And so I just wanted to put a shout out to Joy for all the work that she does in our community. And especially for the work that she has done to help us get this program underway over the last several months. And then finally, I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to celebrate and invite others to celebrate. Our Assistant to the City Manager, Larry, is he still on the line? Or did he leave because he didn't want me? There he is, Larry Laurent, who will be celebrating the anniversary of his 21st birthday tomorrow. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to, it is the anniversary, my 21st. Thank you.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Councilmember, any other council comments? Okay, I'd just like to announce that I'm holding a mayor's town hall series. And the next one will be on March 16th. And my special guest will be our new fire chief, Walbridge. And that will be at 6:00 p.m. For more information, it's on the city's website. Thank you very much. Okay, and I've seen Ms. Avril's hand raised. I would love to go back to, just take a second to call on Ms. Avril. We are ready when you are.
Good evening. I am so sorry. I had technical difficulty and I was unable to get in. And for some reason, my camera's not coming on, so I apologize. It was quite a tiptoe trying to get in. But I heard Anita report out and she did a beautiful job. And I just want to thank the council and all of you for recognizing Red Cross Month this month. And as you know, it's been a crazy year. And as we went into this, we didn't know what it was going to be like, you know, trying to respond to disasters and that. And as you know, we've had a number of disasters in our area. And we got really creative with partners and that. And we were sheltering evacuees in hotels, making sure everybody was getting fed and getting mental health support and everything that they needed. And I just wanted to thank our community for all that they have done to support the Red Cross. And just recognize, you know, it took a lot of work for everybody to ensure that the well-being of our community was taken care of. If I could, I don't know if you heard any of the statistics from the past year, but I'd just like to give you a few of those if I could.
Well, you can have a couple of minutes.
Okay, so we were able, over this last year, we were able to recruit 70,000 new volunteers. And the Red Cross is 90% employed by volunteer support. So without our volunteers, we wouldn't be able to do the work that we do. So we just wanted to recognize all the great work that our volunteers have done, especially during this COVID environment, where it wasn't, you know, always, you know, feeling, I guess, and we kept everybody as safe as we could, but you know, it wasn't always, I think, the best feeling, having to go outside your home and that. And so we've been collecting blood and convalescent plasma and trying to support the needs of those that have been suffering with COVID by collecting the convalescent plasma. We're still doing classes, making sure that those that are on the front lines are continuing to stay current, you know, with their CPR and that. And just doing the work that we can and responding to disasters and being prepared. So just wanted to share a few of those statistics and just some of that news.
Thank you so much. You make it sound so easy. And I just want to, the statistics are astronomical. So thank you. And thank you to all of the volunteers. And thank you for the coordination of such an amazing, amazing program or program. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And I'm so sorry I wasn't able to get on.
Don't be sorry. It's technology at its finest, especially when it's your turn. So I get it.
Thank you. And I'm trying to put my computer on mute right now and I have the blue circle going around, so I'm going to mute as soon as I can.
Maybe Larry, if you don't mind, if you can help Ms. Avril out. I think she can mute you too.
Thank you.
And happy birthday, Larry. Okay, so now we're going to be moving on to item eight. All items listed in the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time this council votes on the action unless members of the city council raise specific items to be discussed for separate review. Items called for separate discussion will be considered following general government. So this evening on consent, I'll be asking council for a motion for items A, B, and C. Do I have a motion?
I'll move adoption of A, B, and C.
Any other comments? Okay, first from Councilmember Bertrand, a second from Councilmember Kaiser. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Can the items be unanimous, please? All right, we're now going to be moving on to item nine, general government. And this is item 9A, recreation report and update on summer 2021 program. And Ms. Flynn, this is your item.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you very much. I'm going to take a minute and share my screen with you, which then we're going to jump to slide U. Can everybody mute this, okay? All right, I see heads nodding. Excellent. All right, so the item before you tonight is recreation report as well as update on summer programs. So as fellow neighbors of birth, we are rapidly approaching our year anniversary when we entered into this pandemic. Before the pandemic began, recreation regularly provided the community with a classes program predominantly for adults and seniors operated out of the James Street Community Center. Classes were fitness, art classes, anything, really anything that might be of interest to the community. We also provided a successful junior guard program to a regular thousand participants during the summer. Camp Capitola also operated. We had an adult softball league. We had a brand-new after-school rec club that was hosted at New Brighton Middle School and plan to operate that again. We had also begun to provide new events, food truck events, to our local community, as well as providing winter movie series out of the community center. And I hoped to be able to provide those again. But as we all know, with the onset of the pandemic, a lot of things began to change. And so recreation needed to as well adapt and modify. One of the first programs that we were able to modify as it be around April was providing online classes, taking the classes that existed here in the community center, working with those contractors and assisting them to move on to an online platform. We provided the community service with phone support in order to assist many of the participants to get on the Zoom platform and be ready to make this transition. We currently provide about 240 participants each month on this online platform for our online classes. Also, in the summer of 2020, with brand-new guidance, we were able to modify our junior guard program. And using the stable group guidance that existed for childcare and continues to exist, we made modifications to the junior guard program. It was smaller than what our typical capacity was and only operated in the mornings. As you may remember, we had some beach closures during the summer and did a shift in the hours of operation and provided just one AM session. It operated on a two-week cycle. And we offered ultimately five sessions throughout the summer for the participants. A small program, but a successful program as it was one of six programs that was actually able to operate in the state last summer. We also did modifications to Camp Capitola, operated out of the community center, again using the guidance for stable groups and provided purely day-long programs. So half-day programs for early care or extended care was not able to happen under the modification for COVID. We also developed new programs that were completely developed purely for COVID modification. The first one that we provided was the Out of School Time Program, also known as OST. This program started in September and is a distance learning and support, distance learning support and recreation activity program. It's currently operating out of the community center. We also partnered with Shoreless Community Church to have pods available at that site as well. This program was provided to a suburban elementary school district student. And later on, in the fall, we partnered, developed a partnership with County Parks in order to provide a more affordable fee to the participants in that program. To still be able to provide fun and exciting events for families while we were trying to find fun ways to do fun things with COVID, we partnered with the Capitola Hotel Chamber of Commerce to provide the heli car cruise. This was a fun event where families decorated their cars, met at Capitola Mall, and led by the Capitola Police Department, who was also a key part of the group developing the ultimate route that the crews would go on in partnership with the Chamber. And then, as was said, we herded everybody and led the cruise on its route and ended at the James Street Community Center, where all of the youth in cars received a prepackaged bag of treats that was gathered from the legwork of the Chamber with donations for putting together those two bags, trip two bags. It was, I felt like it was a very successful, that we had lots of feedback. And ultimately, we just felt really great to provide something really fun to the community. We also, as a new offering that could be done with a COVID mindset, provided the Reflections of 2020 Art Contest. This art contest was designed in partnership with the Arts and Cultural Commission and was provided to the community in two phases. The first phase was the digital gallery, where artists submitted digital images of their artwork created under the theme Reflections of 2020. And that digital gallery was housed on the city of Capitola's website and then ultimately judged by some community member judges, identified the top winners from each division in that digital gallery. And then just recently, just this past weekend, those digital gallery winners moved to the Public Choice Display, which was held at the Bandstand on what turned out to be a lovely Saturday, where the public got to come and do a socially-distanced one-way walking tour of those 18, 17 pieces that made it to, as the finalists of the digital gallery. Got to view them in person. And then through an online voting card, make their choice for the top winners. And so in a slight break of flow in a presentation, I'm going to share with you the top winners as breaking news. So the winner of the youth division for the public choice was The Mac by Isla Bonney. So this is our youth division winner. The novice division, guided by Polly Herhold. And the professional division was A Walk Through Darkness by Stacy Rodriguez. So we're very excited to share with you these three beautiful pieces. All of these individuals were top prize winners and their artwork will be displayed within the city. So in moving on to looking at the future, we have another fun family event quickly approaching that has also been developed with the Capitola Hotel Chamber of Commerce, as well as participating village businesses. And that is the Capitola Easter egg scavenger hunt. Youth will be able to get game cards either from picking them up at certain locations or downloading them and printing them off at home. And then search for these hidden eggs, which are laminated, colorful laminated eggs that participating businesses will hide within their shops. And the youth will be able to find those eggs, score them on a game card, and redeem them for prize eggs at the James Street Community Center. Looking a little further into the future, we are planning for Junior Guard 2021. Currently, there is no updated guidance that would impact Junior Guard or Camp. So we are still functioning off of the same original guidance that was provided in, it was like July, late July, July 29th, I think, from 2020, and are hopeful that we will be receiving new guidance soon. But currently, under what we are able to provide, it would again operate in two-week-long sessions for four sessions total. But this summer, however, we are planning to offer an AM as well as a PM time block for those programs. Camp Capitola will again operate in much the same way as it had operated in the past. Again, hopeful that we will have some guidance that will allow us to either expand the number of youth that we are able to provide within a single group or alter some of the ways that we have to do staffing, thereby also potentially opening up more enrollment capacity for both Junior Guard as well as Camp Capitola. And then, we're proposing, excuse me, a new potential program. And that would be Capitola Family Camp. So the Capitola Family Camp would be a community-building opportunity that has the ability to be COVID-friendly. Ultimately, the program would be an affordable, three-night program that would operate from August 6th to August 9th. Participants that would register, per participant lodging, meals, as well as staff activities would be included in the fee price. And we would hope to open registration on April 15th for this program. The retreat center that Family Camp would be happening at would require a minimum number of registrations. And that minimum number of And that minimum number of paying participants, which would be 45, we would need to register at least that minimum before June 21st in order for the operation to continue. Family Camp, if we were to offer this program, would not operate in the purple tier in the event that August were to take a step back from where we currently are. And we are still waiting on updated guidance for Family Camp that would be impacting. Currently, there are a number of private retreat centers that are operating these kinds of programs under hospitality and restaurant guidance. The American Camp Association has been working towards getting some clear guidance. And actually, just this afternoon, the state issued their first guidance for overnight, overnight camp. It's not very informative yet and we are expecting to have more information. But this afternoon, it was nice to see some forward progress in that guidance. The speed schedule will be brought to council for consideration at the March 25th meeting. So as far as fiscal impacts, the Junior Guard and Camp Capitola programs already have approved budgets in this fiscal year. And if Family Camp were to move forward, a budget for that would be included in the proposed F Y 21, 22 budget as all of the expected expenses would occur in the next budget. So my recommendation for tonight is to receive a report regarding the recent recreation division activity and plans for our program, including the new proposed Capitola Family Camp. And I am available for questions at this time.
Thank you very much. I see Councilmember Kaiser's family.
Thanks, Nikki. The Easter egg thing sounds really cool. I think that's a great way to sort of segue COVID-style. I had a question about the Family Camp. Is there a specific retreat center that you're talking with to hold that?
Yeah, so we haven't, I, I have kind of penciled in a, some dates at a specific site in order to make sure that we have an idea. It would be located in the foothills of the Sierras outside of Jackson. However, it is, it would be possible that we might be able to move it to a different location depending upon availability if we needed to, if there wasn't any change in appropriate guidance or something along those lines.
Oh, okay. Cool. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, so for the Family Camp, like a family of two, three, four, or five, or something like that, are you going to entertain like a group setting or a whole bunch of people get together and sort of share a space together?
Right, so families would book their rooms as a family group. And there are, at various retreat centers, particularly this one, there are rooms that have the ability to just house four people. So it would be like a room with two bunk beds, for example. There are also larger rooms or larger cabins that has the ability to sleep eight people in that particular cabin. So as different families and households register for this program, they would ultimately input information that would say like, we are a family of five and then indicate whether they would be interested in a cabin lodging or whether they'd be interested in a dormitory-style lodging. And so we would have those placements that would best fit the size of the family. But the family would be in a room that would be all to themselves, allowing for, similar to like staying in a hotel room. And then the rest of the programming is outside. And so we would have a guidance for providing recreational activities outside to conduct activities such as playing volleyball or going for hikes or swimming outdoors or a number of other recreation activities that would be able to occur on the site.
These are places, like you mentioned, that have been doing this as a business? So they're well-established? Is that it?
Well, so the retreat centers are, have been, yeah. I don't know how long in particular this retreat center has been going, but it's been well-established for quite some time. The operation of this is, there are several. This particular retreat center is not something that has been operating as they predominantly do group rentals.
I too.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, team, no hands raised. I'll go ahead and take this to the audience. If you have any questions from our audience this evening.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees at this time. And you make sure, but I do not see any emails either on the site.
So we'll bring this back to council for deliberation. And I'm just checking, this is just a report, right? You don't need any approval at this point. Am I reading that correctly? Okay, I do have, oh, sorry, Councilmember Bertrand, did you have a comment? I'll be on mute, Councilmember. Oh, one more time. There it is.
Okay, yeah, trying to use the spacebar now. I think this is a great idea and it has the potential to become a tradition for the city of Capitola. There's other cities that do this, San Francisco's one, and even schools do it, like UC Berkeley. So, you know, people go for years and years, you know, because they make friends there and, you know, it becomes an annual thing. So I think this is a great idea. Thanks for coming up with it.
I absolutely agree. Any other council comments? Okay, Nikki, I just wanted, well, first, thank you. The Out of School Program has been such a success and I've just heard that great feedback from so many community members and I appreciate you putting that together at the last minute. I mean, and it's such a thriving program and I love all the ideas and I'm looking forward to the Easter egg hunts or scavenger hunts. One thing I wanted to mention, we had a speaker earlier at the beginning of today's agenda and they were talking about some sort of collaborative youth action network. And I don't know if this is something for like summer or anything like that, but, or anything that Parks and Rest would take on, but perhaps this could be something, a collaborative opportunity for us. And perhaps staff can come back with some more information on that and that's something that would fall within Parks and Rest department. Okay, well, there's no action at this time? Oh, Councilmember Bertrand, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Just, you were talking and it made me think of something. So Nikki, you mentioned you're doing something with the Community Church on Monterey. Is that correct?
So the Shorelife Community?
Sure, yeah, I was wondering about that, yeah.
So they are one of our additional sites for the O S T program. In order to, so having, in order to be able to provide for as many students as possible in the O S T program, we partnered with them to use two of their rooms on that site.
Yeah, vaguely remember this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to now move on to item 9B. And Jamie, can you let me know, am I correct in that we don't need any action at this time for this item? I'm going to take that as a...
That's correct. Sorry, my computer takes a little bit to flip it.
All right, I didn't want to jump the gun. I didn't want to miss anything. So I appreciate that. Okay, item 9B, fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget update. And I see Mr. Malberg loving on. I believe it's your item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Let me take a moment to share my screen. Can you all see that? Okay. So as you just mentioned, this is the fiscal year.
Mr. Malberg, do you want us to see your notes? Or can you extend your screen so we can see it a little bit bigger? This is the tricky part, the display setting, right?
Is that better?
Yes, perfect.
So as you mentioned, this is the fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget update. And being consistent with COVID times, it's a little different this year as this is our third budget update rather than our first budget update for this year. So some financial highlights, sales tax is performing about, it's fairly close to last year. Through December, we're at just under $4 million in sales tax versus about 4.2% last year. We're 5.8% above our amended budget, which has been reduced by 10% from the prior year. The T O T is tracking pretty close to projections right now. We're at just under 749,000 versus about 921 in the prior year. We've received basically two-thirds of our budget through half of the year, so tracking pretty well. We'll see how January and February play out. But just as a reminder, our amended budget was reduced by 30% from the prior year. Originally that was 70, so through our last two budget amendments, we raised that up quite a bit. Parking revenue also performing close to current projections. We're a little over 381,000 through December versus about 463 in the prior year. We've received about 59% of our budget, which was reduced by 25% from the prior year. And expenditures are down a little over 1.9 million or 21% from the prior year and tracking pretty close to budget right now. On the revenue side of things, you can see that taxes, we've received 47% at the midway point. That's pretty normal as we don't get our second property tax payment until around April. We're down a little over 158,000, 2.7% from the prior year. License and permits is actually up a little bit, which is a little interesting. Business licenses and encroachment permits are down, but building permits and planning permits are up, so making up the difference by an extra $1,800 from prior year. The intergovernmental is way higher than last year and that's related to the CARES Act funding that we got last year and the O S T revenue that we're receiving from the county. It looks low. It's because the O S T money comes in in the years. So that'll catch up as we get the last two payments over the next three to four months or so. Charges for services, down almost 34%, which we anticipated it is tracking a little bit better than budget at 52%. Funds and forfeiture is kind of a similar story. It's down 16%, but tracking right about where we expected it to be. Use of property and money is down. That's basically interest earnings. Just interest rates have gone way, way down. But it's a small dollar amount. We do have some CDs that are outside of these numbers that are accruing interest that will pull down in June that'll make this number a lot closer to budget. And then other revenue is tracking on budget and 33% higher than last year. And that's, the two things driving that are we received a $36,000 donation for the Police Department K-9 program. We just, it was 12, 12 payments over the last year. We just received a final payment just this week. And then our memorial plaque program was twink about double what it normally does for some reason. So that's boosting revenues a little bit there. So overall revenues were at 47% at the midway point and down about a little over 5% from prior year or almost $400,000. So as I mentioned, we've amended the budget twice already. So these budget amendments here are really just to provide a better reflection of where we think these revenues are going. So our first recommendation on the revenue side is to increase our sales tax. It's currently about 195,000 over budget at mid-year. So we'd like to increase that by 187.5. Reason being is cannabis business tax is just starting much slower than we anticipated. It's starting to pick up now. We're at about 102,000 and I think we'll pretty easily hit the 187, not easily, but we'll hit the 187. But, and just as a reminder, last year at this time, we only had 16,000. So that's a new revenue source that's kind of still in the process of building up. The overall impact of these, it's actually at zero to the general fund. There's one to increase and others to decrease. From a performance standpoint, so as I just mentioned, Bradley Burns, we'd like to change that from being 10% below current budget, or prior year budget to six and three quarters. Measure O, Measure F, and T O T revenue, budgets we'd like to leave the same. Cannabis business tax, cut that budget by 50%, take it down to the 187.5, which is really probably low, will end up this year. And then parking revenues, recreation classes, recreation stores, the grants and other stuff, we like to leave as they are. The recreation revenues, although they look low, well, they are low, but there's offsetting expenditures that don't happen when those activities. So it's not overly concerning that those are low because the expenditure side is also low. And on the expenditure side, so as of right now, personnel are mid-year, we're at 53.4% of budget. Again, that's pretty standard because we prepaid the U A L payment, which was 1.7 million this year. So that, as we kind of spread that out over the year, that number gets more and more. We're down 5.1% from prior year or 273,000. Contract services are down 33% from last year, but tracking a little bit better than where we get budgeted. So a lot of savings going on in contract services right there. Training memberships are down from prior year, almost 47% and tracking better than budget, coming in at 37% of our budget. Supplies are down 25% from prior year on the expenditure side and tracking a little bit better than budget. And then the internal service funds and other financing uses are right on budget. And those are really transfers that we control, so those will always, or should always be right on budget. So total expenses were at 51.3% of our budget halfway through the year. Again, down 21% or a little over 1.9 million from prior year. So pretty much tracking right where we expected after amending the budget a few times earlier this year. As a general fund summary, so really there's no change overall to the total numbers. So we still are showing a little over 15 million in revenues for the fiscal year, offset by about 14.3 million in expenditures. That will increase our fund balance by 768,000. And as you recall, during the December budget review, following the tax recommendations, City Council designated 600,000 as what I'm calling kind of a general fund stabilization account that just helps us mitigate if things go a little bit south. Doesn't sound like they will at this point, but if they do, we have that money to kind of smooth things out and not have to go back and make drastic cuts. Which if, we leave all of this in place, that'll leave us with an ending fund balance or estimated ending fund balance in June of a little under 850,000. As far as other funds outside of the general fund, on the consent agenda tonight, there was a contract for housing and administration consulting. So this, rather than do two resolutions and two budget amendments, we just kind of approved that, that contract amendment and this is just putting that into the budget. And also, if you recall, we were awarded the C D G C D one grant in January. And this is just kind of folding in and getting those, the revenue and expenditures into the budget. I'm sure you all have heard that President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan this afternoon. It's just a $1.9 trillion economic stimulus plan. Total aid has bounced around between 130 and 120. 130 billion, 120 billion. It ended up at 130 billion, which leaves 65 billion for city funding. And our estimated, we receive an estimated amount from the legal cities and our estimated amount is 1.88 million. They're going to split that into what they call tranches. They're basically splitting it into two payments 12 months apart. So the clock starts today, well, maybe it starts tomorrow since the president signed it into law today. The federal government has 60 days to get the first payment out to all of the agencies. For Capitola, as a non-entitlement C D G, population under 50,000, our money goes to the state before it comes to the city. So we have 60 days. So we have 60 days for the Fed to release the funds and then 30 days for the state. So as of right now, we're looking at the first half of our payment coming in later than mid-June. And then the second installment would be mid-June of 2022. From what we're hearing, cities can use the funds from revenue loss due to COVID-19. And there's some new changes that allow cities to use these funds for infrastructures such as water, sewer, and broadband. And there's been a little confusion, but these funds cannot be used to cut taxes or to fund our UAL. Those are basically the only prohibitive things I've heard so far from this. So this is pretty exciting news. Just as a reminder, we have our capital, our capital award project. We currently have a $1.2 million budget. That's from Measure F funding. We've spent about 300,000, even a slip of a little over 900,000. We've also received a $1.9 million coastal conservancy grant. So that takes our total current funding up to just about 2.8 million. Our project cost estimate at this time is really rough, is in the five to seven million dollar range. And as far as the status, we're waiting on the final two permits, which we anticipate being approved by summer of this year, which means we could actually put this project out to bid in fall of this year. And then once construction starts, there's a nine-month construction window. And I bring this up because on the coastal conservancy grant, we have to, I believe we have to spend that money within the next couple of years, or we could potentially have it reduced or lose it. So during the fiscal year 21, 22 budget adoption process, we'll have to start identifying how to fund that project and what that project is going to look like as far as scaling the size of the project. For community grants, I'm actually turning these next couple of slides over to Larry. This was more in his wheelhouse to go over the community grant program.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor Brooks, council members, I just wanted to kind of go over where we stand on the community grant program. If you remember, in fiscal year 2021, the council did not fund the community grant program due to projected revenue decreases due to COVID. And just for reference, in the prior fiscal year 1920, the community grant expenditure was approximately $222,000 from general fund and an additional $28,000 from the dedicated TOT tax, the East Early Childhood and Youth Program. Grantee has last received payments from the city in June 2020. Normally, when the project is or the program is funded, they receive a payment in December and one in June. As we're aware, staff has been working, as well as council, working to secure other funding sources for some past grantees that fit into the CDVG CARES Act funding. The programs that have funded through CDVG totaled approximately $121,000 of the $222,000 in 2019, 20. And just to, you know, none of the Early Childhood and Youth Program grant recipients received CDVG funding for those programs. Jim, can you, next slide, thank you. Just a reminder, these are the following programs that were approved for funding in CDVG Round One. Community Bridges, the Meals on Wheels lift line. And these are specific programs. It isn't the organization as a whole. It's these programs, Grey Bears for their food distribution, and Second Harvest Food Bank. So we're here to let you, the direction we, or the recommendation we have at this point, if the council desires to fund the community grant program in this fiscal year, we recommend the following. Open up the application process for the programs not receiving CDVG funding. We have concerns that if we receive, if we funded these programs through our community grant program, it might, it might impact their ability to receive the CDVG funding this year. Form an ad hoc subcommittee to review the applications. And then direct staff to return to council when more information is known about how this fund, how the federal funding can be used to determine the program funding source and amount. And that's all I have on this, just one.
Okay. So just to go over what our fiscal year 21, 22 budget process is going to look like. And these are all tentative dates. When I put this slide together, I realized that I never actually took the budget calendar for council approval, so I will have that at our next meeting. But these are the tentative dates that we have right now. Getting the proposed budget distributed to council by April 30th. Special City Council meetings and budget hearings, May 5th, May 20th, June 2nd, and June 17th. Typically, in a normal year, get it done in the first two. I think last year, we used all three, but we always set four of these meetings up just in case we have the need. The Finance Advice Committee will be conducting, meeting the regular meetings on April 20th and June 15th, and then a special meeting on May 4th, laying on the proposed budget once it's distributed, and then target budget adoption on June 24th. We did discuss, actually, all of this information that you're receiving this evening at our last FAC meeting in February. And the three recommendations that came from the FAC were to accept staff's recommendation on the budget amendments for the sales tax and the cannabis business tax. Maintain the $600,000 set aside as a COVID-19 contingency. And then the FAC committed to conducting a special meeting to discuss the American Rescue Plan once it was signed by, well, signed by Joe Biden, by President Biden, which happened today. So once I start getting kind of detailed and writing, which I think will happen relatively quickly, I'll reach out to the FAC and set up that special meeting. So staff's recommended action for this evening is to receive a fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget update and adopt proposed resolution, amending fiscal year 2021 budget. Consider the FAC recommendations and provide direction to staff. And then provide any additional direction to staff on any of the other programs, community grants, or anything else that may come up. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Okay, so Vice Mayor Story.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Larry. Jim, I had a question. My question was about the cannabis tax. Do we know why it underperformed in the last fiscal year? And is that likely to continue, that trend?
And I'm speculating a little bit here. The thing that I do know is it took them longer to get opened up than originally anticipated. So that, there was a delay in both shops getting open. So we were behind at the end of last calendar year and kind of lagging into this year. I'm also getting the feeling, because we did quite a bit of research reaching out to the county and other cities on what their stores were generating. And ours just aren't generating that, so I'm starting to wonder if there's some market saturation and that the amount of people that utilize those services are a fixed amount. And the more stores we add, just kind of spreads that out. But I don't know that for sure. That's kind of just me speculating.
Yeah, thank you. Maybe it'll take more experience to determine what the steady state may be. Larry, my, if I may, Mayor, Larry, my question for you is, on your procedure for community grants, I did hear you mention us setting aside a certain sum of money in advance before putting out RFPs for applications?
Yes, Councilmember Story, that's correct. Because of the uncertainty on how the funds, the federal, the American Care Act, I think that's the term, can be used, we want to find out more information of that to help the council make that decision on the funding amount and source. And we figured, the idea was to go out for applications and then that would give the staff as well, everyone to understand what the implications are with those funds and then review those grants once we have a better idea of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay. I do have one question about that staff recommendation on the application process. I know that we had Optimum Solutions suggest updates to the application process. By approving this this evening, would that include those updates to the application? Or automatically? Or is this something that the subcommittee, you were expecting them to do? What was the process on that before we waited for them to go out?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brooks. Actually, staff had made those changes and was going to be presenting those changes to the council when we started to talk about that. But I think at this point, we would move forward with the application as it stands. We did make the changes recommended by Optimum Solutions to that application. I think the changes in this, in this framework aren't significant. You know, I think there's still some work to be done, be done. But I think if the council would like to, if the council desires to fund this in 2021, sorry, 2021, we would probably want to get that, those applications out relatively soon. And so, but we did make the recommended changes prior to the changes in the program.
Vice Mayor Story, did you have another question?
No, I did not. Sorry.
Okay. That's all right. Okay, well, I see no other questions at this time. We'll go ahead and if we can check to see if we have any public comments or questions.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to council for deliberation and a motion. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Thank you to staff and to the FAC for providing recommendations and all the work that they've put into this. I would like to move forward in providing direction to staff to open up the applications for the community grant funding and creating, you know, an ad hoc committee of the council to consider those applications. And then, as staff mentioned, reviewing the funding that would be available for them after the FAC. But as was noted, I think it's important to get those application processes underway as soon as possible. So if there's consensus among the council, I would like to recommend that we provide that direction to staff. And then I will also make a motion to adopt the recommended action as presented on the screen right now, along with the direction that I just suggested.
I'll start, Ken.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Any other comments or questions? Vice Mayor Story.
Yes, thank you. I was, I wanted to ask whether as a part of the motion, we could identify the council members that will serve on that subcommittee. And I'm happy to see Councilwoman Peterson and Mayor Brooks serving that role. So that can be considered an amendment to the motion on the floor?
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I had expressed an interest in being on that committee also. So I'm just curious how interested people are.
I'm interested in being on the ad hoc committee.
I'd like to stay with it only because I've been a part of the process from the beginning when we first started considering how we were going to revamp the community grant project or process a couple of years back. And so I'd like to stay with it, having the kind of experience and knowledge of where it's been in the past.
And I'd like to be on this also, having been on the FAC when we addressed this over many years. You know, it's quite an issue trying to decide what programs to be on. So I've been part of that process as a member of the FAC.
Okay. Unfortunately, we can't have three council members on the subcommittee. Councilmember Bertrand, I'm still very interested in maintaining on the ad hoc committee. And Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Story made the motion. Are you not prepared to accept the friendly amendment at this time?
No, I'd like to have a different way to deal with this issue. Maybe at the next meeting.
Okay, so if, would you be willing to accept the friendly amendment on the table at this time?
No. What I'm saying is I'd like to have this dealt with at the next meeting. Because I'm very interested in being on this committee.
You'd like the whole issue of the community grants altogether to be dealt with at the next meeting? Because that delays the opportunity.
We're talking about the friendly amendment. So I'd just like that particular issue to be dealt with at the next meeting. I think we need to move ahead, but as far as how the committee is going to be composed, I think we're moving too fast on that.
Can I, just to clarify, if we were to bring this forward at another meeting, would you be asking for a vote on it? Because we could also, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we could also do that this evening? Or if you're looking for a time for additional conversation followed by a vote? That's understandable also.
Yeah, I think so. So, you know, I'd like to commit here to consider myself also, since I've had a lot of experience with this issue, particularly as a member of the FAC.
Okay. Samantha, if we, if we have a motion on a friendly amendment on the table at this time and councilmember Bertrand is not prepared to continue with the second as it dies, for lack of a better word?
Yes, good, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to use this opportunity though to add an additional amendment, if that's okay to, or I'm going to make a new motion, if that's, if that's all right. I think that's the next step. So I'm going to go ahead and I want to make some proposals to the mid-year budget. There's two opportunities that were presented to me, and I'd want to, I wanted to present them to council this evening because it was, we would need to amend the mid-year budget. The two items that I'd like to present to council, one is, council already decided that they would like to move forward with implicit bias training. And I had mentioned an interest in also having city staff trained as well. And so I'd like to suggest that we, I'm now blanking on the words, but put aside $5,000 for implicit bias training for council and for city staff. I know that staff has been working on this for some time, but I just didn't want us to forget that we talked about this and that there will be funding. I know Vice Mayor Story was wanting a number at the last time. So I just wanted to bring that forward to council this evening. And then the second item I'd like to propose to council this evening is a countywide event project proposed by Santa Cruz County Parks Department. It is a three-month summer project. And Santa Cruz County Parks would be putting together what they call the Arts Hype Challenge. And what they do is they set up arts sourced by them from local artists in each one of the cities and in our parks. The, and then they have a scavenger hunt and there's prizes. And the whole point is to show that we're collaborating with other cities as we move out of the pandemic. And it just, I think it ignites, you know, movement and healthiness and just, you know, we're trying to come out of the pandemic. And so I think this is just a lovely opportunity for the city of Capitola to participate in. And that amount, I was looking at the Public Arts Fund. Right now, there's approximately $175,000 in public arts. And looking at the language, it looks like this project, this program would all write under it. And that is about $5,000 as well for the three-month program with the other cities. So I'd like to make a motion to, to include those two projects in the mid-year budget as well as adopting the open of the application and the ad hoc committee and the items expressed in the staff recommendation and to have councilmember Peterson and myself on the ad hoc committee. So if anyone's open to a motion?
I just have a rule here, just to Samantha. So the thing that didn't go through was the substitute motion. Sam, as far as I know, still has the motion on the floor. I just did not agree to the substitute motion. So my understanding is we have a motion on the floor and, you know, we still need to address. floor, and, you know, we still need to address that.
I wasn't
Sorry, Kristen. Yeah. So that motion's still on the floor. Sam made a substitute, and that substitute, excuse me, that addition did not get passed. So we still have to deal with the original motion.
I think that councilmember Story made a motion for a friendly amendment to councilmember Peterson's motion, and then councilmember Peterson agrees to the friendly amendment. But you are correct, councilmember Bertrand, you did not. You have seconded it, and you did not agree. So now, councilmember Peterson's motion is still on the floor. Councilmember Peterson, if you would like to withdraw that, that's fine. Alternatively, Mayor Brooks, you could offer your motion as a substitute motion to councilmember Peterson's motion. Or you could offer a vote on councilmember Peterson's motion.
Councilmember Peterson, would you be open to my substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the table at this time. So Samantha, help me out. So now I call for a second? You're muted.
I apologize. And so now it will, councilmember Bertrand, second that motion, the substitute motion.
Councilmember Bertrand, would you be open to seconding the motion that I proposed this evening?
The only part about this, as I expressed earlier, is that I feel that the constitution of the committee is moving a little too fast. We haven't talked about it. And I feel I'm very qualified, probably more than anyone else on the board here, because I've worked on this issue for many years on the, as a member of the fact. So I would like that to be considered at the next meeting. Everything else that you proposed, I have no problem with. It's fine with me.
Can we just clarify? This is a substitute motion and not an amendment to my motion. So we don't need the same person to second it, correct?
I think you actually do. I can actually look, forgive me, we'll give you two things. I can look it up in Rosenberg right now. I think you actually do, but I could be wrong.
What if I withdraw my motion altogether, and Yvette's motion is, stands on its own, correct?
That is the quickest way to do it.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my motion and second Yvette.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a first and a second on the table. Does everyone understand the motion that's on the table? I just want to offer clarity again.
Okay.
So, yeah, no problem. So councilmembers, the motion on the table is to adopt staff's recommendation. And part of that staff recommendation is a ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee would consist of councilmember Peterson and myself. There are two additional items that require budget, kind of, will require some budget or some money from our current budget. And the first one is training. So I'm asking council to agree to using $5,000 of our budget for implicit bias training. And I'm also asking council for $5,000 to, out of the Public Arts Fund, to run a summer program with the Santa Cruz County Parks nonprofit organization. So that is the motion on the table. I believe I covered all of councilmember Peterson's items she brought forward earlier. So we have a first and a second. May I have both?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand?
I'm sorry. Are there any questions before I move forward?
Yeah, I have
Vice Mayor Story?
Yes, thank you. Just on the funding for the implicit bias training, I wanted to confirm that it will be voluntary for staff. And I also wanted to clarify that for the $5,000 county parks, art program, it, there will be an event that will happen in one of Capitola parks.
Yeah, we better get one. Yeah, no, absolutely. It's over a span of three months, but we would choose one park, and we would have our art, our community art there. I believe they do set up a few events throughout the summer, too, where they put up a booth and hand out masks. And they do that at all the other cities, but there would, it would be a standing thing at one of our parks, yes. And then I believe with, and Jamie, you can chime in here, but I believe we can't require implicit bias training, and that would just actually be something that I would leave to council or to Jamie to move forward with staff on his side of it.
Great, thank you. I support the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so can we have a
Can I pipe in real quick? So we're going to change, because we're doing this by resolution and the budget amendment I have as an attachment. I'd actually heard about the park and built a new budget amendment attachment with a resolution. So if you don't mind, I'll quickly share my screen, just so you can see how that changes the attachment. On the implicit bias training, we have, we have plenty of money in our training budget. We don't really need to amend our budget to be able to fit that in. Plus, I believe we get reimbursed from our insurance carrier for a portion of it. And so it would just be adding the $5,000 for the public art. And I will share that real quick, just so you can see how that changes. Can you see that?
Yeah.
So it's just the very bottom, Road 29 on there, the very bottom line, it's just under other funds, adding $5,000 for art in public places. So just, so you know that the attachment to the resolution will look right.
Got it, okay. Okay, any other, do you need anything asked from us? That's, okay. Oh, councilmember Bertrand, I believe you're muted. Do you have another question?
Oh, there, I got to get this thing. So Sam said something about the participation in the training is a voluntary thing?
So I think the best way to describe it is that we're working on a number of different options for training. Really, the city has your different sort of types of employees. We have our sworn officers, we have our miscellaneous employees, and then there's city council. So we're developing a number of different options, and we plan to come back to the city council in April to have a more full discussion about what the different shape and form of these trainings can look like. So we're not really prepared to have the conversation this evening, because we haven't done all the homework yet. But we do plan to get back in front of the council in the next couple of meetings with the plan.
Yeah, because some of these things are state required, and those are required, because the state of California requires it. But, you know, anything other than that, I don't know if it's voluntary or required. So I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, that's right. We will have a more full discussion about it at the coming meeting.
Great. Okay. I believe we're ready for a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Bertrand?
No.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story?
Aye.
Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we're going to move on. We're going to bring back item HD, receive an update on the pandemic response. And I believe this is our city manager's item.
Mayor Brooks, council, give me a sec here. I'm going to share my screen. Is that working all right? Great. So I pulled this off the consent item because we had some developments here this week, particularly that we transitioned our state COVID tier. But we won't skip ahead too far. First, I just want to quickly share our numbers. You know, what I realize is the total case number isn't that useful a number. But where we are in the county right now, just in terms of understanding where we are, is we have about 5.5% of the population has been diagnosed with COVID. In Capitola, we're a bit less, just over 4%. In the state of California, the number is closer to around 9%. So Santa Cruz County is doing a little bit better than 50%, better than the state. Capitola is doing a little bit better than the average in the county. A new data point, which I'm sort of happy to start reporting on as we do this moving forward, is that there's been almost 100,000 vaccine doses administered in our county. Doesn't mean 100,000 people have been vaccinated. That means 100,000 doses. So I would assume that at least a third of those or more went to second doses. But we're still making great progress in terms of getting ourselves towards per immunity, which we will, which we need. This is, this is the case count over time. This is from the New York Times, actually. I find this a nice, a nice tool to sort of compare and see how the cases are going versus the county's data presentation, just because we have the 14-day average line. And you can see that real high peak that we hit towards the mid-end of January, and then you can see our cases declining. You'll note that we did actually end up with some, a few higher days here, right here this week. So it's a little bit concerning. Right as we went into the red stage, there were a couple of days that were higher, but then today was back down where we would hope to see it. So relatively good news overall in terms of the trajectory of this. And also, I'll just note that these colors don't correspond to the colors that we think of in terms of this purple is not the purple tier. This is the way the New York Times characterizes risk. That's all. So as I mentioned, we moved into the red tier on March 10th, just yesterday. What that does, that was after 16 weeks in the purple tier, and then the stay-at-home order that we had through this winter. It means that retail can increase to 50% capacity. Restaurants can now open for 25% capacity indoors. Museum, places of worship, movie theaters can open for 25% capacity, and gyms can actually be open for limited capacity as well. So it is opening the economy a bit, not all the way, but I'm just trying to stretch the imagination, but it's a step in the right direction. I also want to call your attention to a couple other items that are on this agenda for consideration this evening. The first is that we went back and looked at all of the different emergency orders that were issued around the COVID pandemic. And we discovered that the first emergency order that closed the upper lots was actually, oh, and prohibited the shade structures on Capitola Beach, was technically still in effect, as well as the closure of the parks and skate parks that we had issued back in April. And so those actually were, frankly, we have been operating under different guidance for quite a while. So you had a, another emergency order for consideration this evening, which rescinds those earlier orders to put in place what is considered the best practices at this time. So parking lots are open, shade structures are okay on the beach, and the parks would be open. I also just want to call everybody's attention to where we are in the vaccination strategy. We are in our, what we call Phase 1B. That means that individuals 65 and over, and people who work in education and childcare, food and agriculture, or in the broader rubric of emergency services are now eligible to get a vaccine. I would encourage everybody to do so if they can. You know, we heard, I think, in Biden's speech this evening suggesting that we were going to be seeing, the US has acquired enough vaccines to vaccinate everyone in the country before the end of May. So exciting developments, and I think, you know, I think it's time for everyone to go out there and do their best to get the vaccine. So the recommendation this evening is to approve the resolution that ratifies our first emergency order for this year, that rescinds the first two emergency orders from last year, and then make a determination that the hazards related to the coronavirus pandemic still exist, and there's a need for continued action. With that, I'm available for questions.
Update. Do we have any council questions at this time? Okay, any questions from the audience?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anyone with their hands raised or e-mailing on this topic.
Okay, we'll bring this back to council for deliberation and a vote. Councilmember Bertrand? Councilmember, I believe you're muted still.
I got, I got used to it. I'd like to approve the, excuse me, move the recommended action, approve the resolution, round and find the emergency order, and make a determination that all hazards related earlier are basically, I can't read it on my screen.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second to move staff recommendations. Can I have any other comments or questions? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand?
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story?
Aye.
Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
Okay, the item passes unanimously. And that brings us to item 10, adjournment. I just wanted to thank staff and council and all of our participants, and especially the American Red Cross this evening for being here tonight. Please remember to find the good in others and yourselves. Good night.